It's 5:30 and time to call our meeting to order for August, what the heck is it? August 6th. Roll call please, Jordan.
Councilmember Bunsonis, Johnson, Lunsman, Olson, Remley, Ronane, Rux, Slade Hansen, Mayor Leeson.
Join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we start with a motion to approve last week's minutes.
Moved.
Motion Bunsonis, second by Johnson, to approve the minutes of July 30 and 31. If there are no changes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Open forum, Mr. Weizmann, you have the floor for whatever you want to do with it.
We have to sit.
Welcome.
Can you turn on this mic? Is the green light on in the mic?
Yes. Okay, very good. We just wanted to thank you for letting us come present tonight.
Casey, can you pull the mic up so you can at least try to get some volume on it?
Is that better? I can sit if you want me to. We just wanted to thank you for letting us come present quarter two on behalf of the Aberdeen Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. I know Lynn said there wasn't much on the ballot tonight, so it might take a few extra minutes if you don't mind. But no, we do wanted to thank you for letting us come present on behalf of what we have been going on. A little bit about the CBB, you guys all know who we are, where we're located, what we do, and what we try to offer the city, not only to visitors as they come in, to day trippers, to family members, to guests, however they might be, however they arrive to Aberdeen, that's our goal. The areas that we target, obviously regional tourism, budget conscious families, we're looking at that 100 mile radius and working our way out. How can we bring those people in to Aberdeen in hopes they spend the night? They don't always spend the night, but day trippers, as we call them, they do come in and they do spend money. Out of state hunters, we all know what they bring to the community. It's a third quarter slash fourth quarter time of the year as a lot of other communities are slowing down. Those hunters are a great boost to the Aberdeen and Brown County economic. They bring a lot of money into Aberdeen, let's put it that way. So what they have to offer, we're here to welcome them. Attendees for meetings, conventions, and sporting events, that's something that we probably don't touch on enough, that we do a lot of work in our office, in the scenes, behind the scenes, and in front of the scenes to make those events happen. What does that entail? Sporting events could be high school activities, it could be estate swim meets, it could be whatever it is, anything that's going to gear towards those athletes, bringing those athletes in, working with the venue. How do we secure those venues? We have to tag that venue, do they have dates available? We have to work with the dates, make sure that everything falls in line to put Aberdeen at the top of the site selection. We are competing against other communities in the state of South Dakota. How can we put Aberdeen first and how can we put them at the top of the list? So whether it's a meeting, convention, or sporting events, that's what our office spends a majority of our time on. You don't always see it because we're not always successful bidding those conventions. We could lose out to hotel rates, we could lose out to facility dates, we could lose out to, we've lost convention to West River deer hunting before. How that plays into it, I don't know, but we lost the convention. But there's a lot of factors that come into play where we, as the office, try to make those connections happen to try to bring those events to Aberdeen. Along with those efforts we put forth, we manage two websites, the Visit Aberdeen SD website geared towards visitors and events that happen in Aberdeen, and we have our Hunt Fish SD website, which is geared strictly to that hunting and fishing, those outdoor activities. Some numbers thrown out there on tourism, $16 million are spent in our area alone by sportsmen and women coming to the area, and they bring their dollars with them when they come. Along with the two websites, we host social media pages as well, visitaberdinesd.com and Hunt Fish, sorry, Visit Aberdeen SD and Hunt Fish SD are our two main Facebook pages. Along with those two pages, we also host the Aberdeen Community Happenings Facebook page, along with our CBB Events Notice Page. And I, those are two areas I want to just touch on briefly, I think we didn't really discuss last time we were here in great detail. But the Community Happenings Facebook page, like I said, our strong emphasis is those overnight travelers, those day trippers. But there are a lot of events that happen in Aberdeen that just probably don't quite make our list. But this is a resource for, an area for them to get their word out about their event, whether it's, my mind goes blank when these things happen.
Church bake sale.
Church bake sale, or a yoga-thon, or bean bag tournament, probably not heavy on the visitor side of things, but it's great for community involvement. Community involvement breeds family involvement. Family involvement means things to do. Why should your relatives come visit? Boom, it's a natural fit. The CBB Events Notice Page is something that's really not notably known about. It's a private group, which we try to farm out to restaurants, bars, hotels, anybody that would be affected by that athlete, or that family reunion, or that State B basketball tournament, I look at you for the swim meets, sorry, or the swim meets, I mean, anything that would garner maybe staffing extra heavy on the weekend, or staying open a little bit later. It's a private group that we utilize, almost like an email resource to communicate with them, because everybody always has these in their pocket, and it's just a great way to communicate that message, to stay open a little bit later. See, somebody's sending a marketing message right now. That might be us, no, just kidding. But it's a great way to communicate that message via, instead of via email. Not everybody always reads email, but they do, they don't always read it in a timely fashion, so that's where that kind of comes into play. Our marketing campaigns, print advertising, digital advertising, and cable TV ads, you guys have an example of that in your packet that we provided you guys. Some of the marketing efforts we put forth, South Dakota Vacation Guide, Glacial Lakes and Prairie Tourism, Midwest Living, Best of the Midwest, I mean, that's us. South Dakota Magazine, Fargo and Brookings Register and Summer Fund Supplements. That was an insert that was put right into their, to their newspaper, geared towards bringing those people here. That 100 mile radius and out, that's our target. Delta Sky, that put forth a lot of effort on the community of Aberdeen's part. The CBB partnered with Cody out at the airport, and Doug with Parks and Rec to put that, it's a glossy magazine, it's pretty sweet. It goes out to over a million seat backs, I guess, in the skies, and it's one month, and it's not cheap, but it's a very high-class glossy magazine that we were fortunate enough to be part of. And then there's some local stuff, 605 Magazine, South Dakota Magazine, some things that we can utilize as well, and we market those dollars for those buys. We try to find them at the optimal time. How can we get the most bang for our buck? How can we get that half-page ad and pay for a quarter-page price? That's what we're always trying to, trying to reach forward. So this is some of our marketing efforts as well. Some of the other things we also do, we send out a monthly newsletter to over 15,000 subscribers. That's just on the CBB side of things. There's almost 14,000 subscribers on the hunting side of things as well. National Travel and Tourism Week, you guys have heard us talk about that before, that's our chance, our week-long event to puff up our feathers and feature, hey, this is what the CBB does, this is Aberdeen, come visit us, and hopefully you'll love to stay. We record radio ads, not only for those athletes when they come to town, or National Travel and Tourism Week, but we also recorded radio ads that are played in Watertown, in Brookings, in Alexandria, in St. Cloud, and places like that. So we're really trying to reach, that regional tourism is really popular right now, because not everybody always has the money to take that extended Griswold family trip, you know, we want to capture what we can. And what we're seeing with that is, we realize where we're positioned in South Dakota, a lot of people are heading out to the Black Hills. We want to catch them on the way out or on the way back. We've thrown a little slogan out in the office, you're halfway there. You're halfway to the hills, come see us. You're halfway home, come see us. We just want them to see what Aberdeen has to offer on their way out or on the way back, and fall in love with us and come back at a later date. And it's happening, we're seeing it out at Wiley Park as well. Moving on a little bit, I'll skip social media for just a brief second, Leighton's going to kind of talk about that. Our travel shows that we put together, Minnesota Sportsman Show in St. Paul, we didn't attend that last year because it was the same time as the tourism conference in Pierre. Wherever Pheasant Fest happens to be at, we go there. Bismarck Travel Show, Fargo Travel Show, Northwest Sports Show, Minneapolis, and Game Fair is actually happening this weekend and next weekend, it's two weekends back-to-back. But that gives us a chance to communicate Aberdeen's message right to that person standing at the other end of the table. Talk about those bird numbers, talk about what Wiley Park and Storybook Land has to offer, talk about the Aqua Addict Ski Show and how the Mud River Cats love to come to our lake better than their own. I mean, we, we're there to talk Aberdeen and welcome those people while we're here. So that is, that's a huge resource for us as well. Hospitality Rooms, what we do in Aberdeen, not only hospitality room at State B's, but Aberdeen welcomes those athletes and fans while they're here. We hosted girls B and boys B basketball this last year. We served over 800 meals to coaches, ball boys, volunteers, officials, whatever it might be. We served over 800 meals for the girls tournament, and over 900 meals for the men's tournament. Those are volunteers and officials that can't leave the building, but Aberdeen is extending their hospitality arm to welcome them and make them feel at home. Not only with that, the South Dakota Clay Target League kind of popped up this year on the radar, getting teams involved with the Clay Target Championship in hopes to keep that event in Aberdeen. Excuse me. We hosted the hospitality room out there during their state championship shoot as well. So there's a little things, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that are done after 5 o'clock that we, as the CBB, are striving to make those, whoever it is, fans, reunion members, whatever it might be, we're trying to make them feel welcome. Along with that, our visitor center staffing, we house our visitor center staff, volunteer and some paid staff for out at Storybook Land and the Train Depot here, the old Milwaukee Train Depot, are basically our two visitor center locations. The Train Depot's open year-round, the visitor center staff, obviously through the summer months, but working with that visitor center staff to welcome those visitors. Lynn does an excellent job in our office, if you haven't met Lynn, please do. She does an excellent job as she greets the visitors as they come in. While they're there, we try to answer any questions they might have, try to talk them into staying that extra night. Hey, you might want to stay here for the summer concert series, whatever it might be. We throw it all at them in the hopes of just giving them, wow, Aberdeen has a lot going on, a lot to offer. Our complimentary convention services, complimentary is the biggest thing, we don't charge for what we do, whether it's a family reunion that needs name tags, and they want their photo printed on them, or they want a spouse tour, or they want to go to a Hutterite Colony for a spouse tour, or a family getaway, or a hospitality rooms, whatever we do on behalf of the community of Aberdeen, for that visitor, for that athlete, for that convention attendee is free of charge. And we do that with your best interest and your, we just try to do it the best we can. We also host the Aberdeen Community Calendar of Events. That's something that's, it's an ever-changing beast. It's always evolving with the implementation of social media, getting an event out there, XYZ events on social media, we try to capture that information as well, try to contact that person, hey, we would like your information as well, so we can put on our calendar of events and help promote it. And we have our resources with our followers on Facebook and Twitter, where we can help promote those events, and we try to do that very well. Just a little snippet of our calendar of events, I added that for you guys as well for quarter two. Some of the larger ones, South Dakota High School Activities, Jazz Band, Leader Cast, Trap Shooting Association, Paramount Horseshooting, High School Activities Golf, Class Reunions, High School Clay Target Championship, Arts in the Park, Dakota Cup Soccer. Some of these, you're thinking, ah, these happen every year, you know, Arts in the Park, what does the CBB have to do with that? But we help promote it, we provide those visitor packets for the vendors, we provide name tags if need be, we provide registration assistance if need be. Again, all of those services free of charge, and some of those services happen after 5 o'clock. And so we're there, if it makes our list, we have some sort of thumbprint on top of it. So with that being said, our calendar of events, we're always looking for new stuff, so if you guys have anything going on, please let us know. Our website, visitaberdinesd.com/events, takes you right to a form, you can submit your event. Not only do we get a copy of this event, but Glacial Lakes and Prairie Tourism gets a copy of that event as well. So we've already partnered with that connection, we've already made that connection for you. And now we're trying to farm, we're trying to work on getting South Dakota Tourism involved as well, so it's a one-stop shop, one-click, and you're there. That's what we're trying to provide, those events, just to make it easier for them to promote. Some of the services I said that we provide, room block assistance, room rate assistance, so if an event is happening in Aberdeen and swim needs hotel blocks, we can help provide those. If BMX wants reduced rates during their state championship, we provide those as well. If they want group tour planning, press releases, social media newsletter promotions, name tag creation, registration assistance, visitor welcome bags, and even a welcome for Mayor Leeson, we can, if he's available, we can help provide that as well. And all, like I said, all those services are free of charge. Some of our website statistics, you'll see in there as well, and if you look at the second quarter versus the second quarter last year, our traffic has gone through the roof. What does that entail? I'll give you a little bit of explanation with that. Our social media, as we know, social media is what it is, we've been gearing, we call it our Alan Johnson Project, we've been gearing our website traffic from social media, I've thrown it around in the office, I haven't, we've, it's the Alan Johnson's Project, no anyways, but we take that social media presence and we drive them right back to the website. You can do the like, comment, and share on social media, but where does it get you? It does get you some exposure when you share that, of course, but we want to drive them back to the website, so we get that website hit, that engaged traffic, so they can see our website and what we have to offer, but along with that, we capture their email address that we can use at a later date. So when Laura sends out that newsletter of 15,000-plus people, we have somebody's email address incorporated into that. I do the same thing on the Hunt Fish side of things as well. So our promotions, some of our bigger promotions, and Leighton will touch on a few of those, we take that traffic and we drive them right back to the website to increase that engagement. Occupancy tax, we utilize through the Hotel Alliance, anytime you stay in a hotel, you pay an extra $2 event tax. That gives us our best gauge of a true visitor. As you can see, our numbers are kind of, they're, we'd always like to see them up, some months are better than others, but you can see that we're kind of tracking kind of par right now, and that's pretty true for the region. A lot of that comes into play, there's things that come into play that we just can't control. One of that being weather, we can't control the weather. Obviously, we've been pretty fortunate this year to have pretty favorable weather, but there's other things that we can't quite control. Some events that may get canceled or postponed, that we just don't get a chance to host. Example of that being the USATF Qualifier and the USATF Track and Field Meet that were scheduled for June and July. With Central redoing their track surface, that's an event that we can't host, we lost that event, and we may not get that back, depending on who is able to help, who's local content to help us capture that, capture that event again. I know the last time we held that USATF Track and Field Event, there was almost 3,000 athletes that came to Aberdeen over the 4th of July weekend. That's a big one, so that would affect these numbers, that would change these numbers. So that's something that we track very close. SIC codes going into that as well, that's where we kind of try to trap, track that triple B. Lodging, money that's spent on lodging, money that's spent on eating, and money that's spent on drinking, those are SIC code trackable. And as you can see, April, May, and June were really good. For lodging, May and June were up, eating, June was up, and drinking, everybody loved to drink. April, May, and June was up all the way around. So with that being said, you track the year-to-date numbers, we're at that .3, .25, and then June blew them out of the water 15% above. So that's good, that's good to see. With SIC codes and occupancy tax, that gives us, that's, I know, Rob, you had mentioned, how do we track? That gives us our best way to track that information with the numbers that are available. Visitor center activity, we had fun out at Storybook Land this year, I'm not going to, and it's not over. We've seen increased traffic, year-to-date for 2017, there were 17,011 people that signed our guestbook. Year-to-date so far, and we're only halfway through, we're at 10,00106. Why is there an increase? Well, a lot of that is our volunteer staff that we have out there doing an excellent job, that's one reason. In the office, we kick around ideas, how can we capture that email address as they come through? How can we gain that information that we want to communicate as a later date? So we came up with the 2019 vacation package. Obviously, it's 2018, so we're promoting this all year round. Social media through the summer months out at Wiley Park and Storybook Land, and then through the third and fourth quarter, anybody and everybody can sign up online to register to win this 2019 vacation package. Again, capturing their contact information. Where it helps us out at Storybook Land is it gives those gals and gentlemen out there a chance to engage that visitor to sell them something. Instead of just waving hi, would you like to sign our guestbook? Hey, stop over here, sign our guestbook, you could win a vacation package. So that's been, excuse me, that's been huge, huge for out there. Plus, the implementation of the Parks and Rec welcoming their 1,000,000th rider. Everybody saw that this weekend, Saturday, a gal from Millbank was recognized as the 1,000,000th rider. So with us promoting VAP through Glacial Lakes, through South Dakota Tourism, with the favorable weather, with the 2019 vacation package, as you can see, our numbers were sitting well above par for visitor center traffic out at Wiley Park and Storybook Land. In here, I guess a copy as well, you have some information on our hunting side of things. Sorry, I didn't misplace this, but we do partner with Glacial Lakes and Prairie Tourism, South Dakota Tourism, Pheasants Forever, Delta Sky, again, is part of this. But then we've also partnered with Minnesota Wild and Minnesota Twins Yearbook. Just another way to kind of subtly remind those people that Aberdeen is only five hours away, the same five hours we tell them at the, at the sport shows and travel shows. Five hours away, we're halfway there. If you're hunting, you're fully here. And then I did include a copy of our, and you guys have, I believe, got this during our submission, our 2018 written marketing plan, it kind of goes over some of the things that I just spoke about, our strengths, our weaknesses, some of the things that we try to promote, challenges that we get during those promotions are laid out in this as well. So please take a look at this, I'll be open for questions afterwards, but I want to turn it over to Leighton, who handles our social, you don't have to stand, I just like to stand, who handles our social media side of things. Again, the social media kind of plays right into our websites, and that's where we engage with it, I think.
All right, I'll keep mine pretty short here, but some highlights from the second quarter of this year on our Facebook side, our likes and followers increased by almost Currently, we're standing at 13,500 as far as people that like our page and are following it. Reach, we surmassed 720,000, a little over 720,000 in the second quarter, which takes us over a year-to-date total of over a million. That's just an eyelash down from last year at this time, but, you know, I utilize events happening in the community to do a lot of our posting, and last year we had the benefit of the Globetrotters, and that was a very successful event for Aberdeen. So to all the parties that be that have the power, you know, to bring more events in like that, those were good. We utilize Instagram and Twitter to kind of, like Casey said earlier, we push them back towards Facebook for more complete details, and then we push them to our webpage. And it was interesting, the day that we posted our 2019 giveaway for the first time, on my personal email or my work email, I had failed to set my settings, because my phone and email just exploded with all the entries coming in, and my phone was dinging, my computer was humming, so it was interesting to see that. A couple of the highlights for posts, as Casey said, we tried to tap into things that happen either nationally or within the state, and one of them that's been successful for us over the last couple of years is called 605 Day. South Dakota is either one of 13 or 14 states that only have one area code, so they call it 605 Day. In that one-day promotion, we had a reach of 37,000 people, and, you know, we gave away a package prize, ranging from rides at Storybook Land, to bowling, to hot shot tickets, you name it. Speaking of the hot shots, that was a nice addition for us to promote, we did a series of posts for them this year, giving away tickets, and that reached over 47,000 people. Unfortunately, the market got a little saturated on hot shot tickets, everybody was giving them away, so it got to be a challenge there at the end. The Storybook Land Express, 1,000,000th, we were contacted by Parks and Rec to develop a little package there for them, come up with some imagery, some posters and things like that, and we used that on Facebook, and that did rather well. And then, like I said, that 2019 vacation package, we're going to continue to obviously promote that through the year-end, and we also promote that in all our print advertising. We kind of have two ways we go with print right now, the hunting side and then the vacation side. And, excuse me, anytime we do the vacation side, we're pumping that giveaway. Couple posts coming up here in the third quarter, excuse me, again, always very successful for us, in fact, it's already in the books, I'm just not going to tell you about it until next quarter. The Fun at the Fair package, again, that is by far one of our biggest promotions, the fair does very well for the city of Aberdeen. Also, the Storybook Land Festival, we did a one-day promotion there, and again, people, the two things that I think really gravitate people to Aberdeen are the fair and Storybook Land, obviously. Some other things we got going is Aberdeen Wings, NSU's always very supportive of us, we promote their athletics plays and musicals, and the Shrine Circus. On the back of that handout I gave you, just shows you some of the highlights, some of the imagery we've done over the last quarter, and so that's kind of a quick synopsis, some other things that I oversee that I currently got going as we're ramping up for the Rooster Rush here, where we also have the Pheasant Sandwich Shootout, and we're also working on next year's Fun Books. What Fun Books are, if you're not familiar with those, is we utilize these, they're coupon books that we use at out-of-town travel shows, that attendees at these travel shows, it gives them something to promote their travels to Aberdeen. As Casey mentioned, one lead that did pay off for us this year, next year we'll be having the Dakota Cup and the Midco Cup, in basically just a little over a month's time. The Midco Cup, that's the first time Aberdeen's ever held it in 30 years, so that was a good get. With that, any questions?
Hawaii Ski-O.
Yeah. That wasn't me. I just, I just brought it to life a little bit for him.
Come on, see that one again.
The Aqua Addict Ski Show.
Yeah.
Different theme every year, too.
Right. Mark?
I don't have any questions, just to comment. Casey, I think you're doing a great job, you and your staff, spending public money in a wise way, and you also go above and beyond. From what I have heard, you haven't mentioned anything about you doing radio interviews on faraway radio stations on weekends. So I was at random listening to 7:40 AM out of Fargo, all of a sudden you came on the radio one Saturday morning, I think, talking about...
K-Fan, I was talking to Billy Hildebrandt and Bob St. Pierre of Pheasants Forever, it was a sixth...
it was six, about six o'clock in the morning.
So is that live?
Yeah, that was live, yeah.
Well, you know, that's above and beyond the call of duty, really, in my opinion, but good, keep it up.
And we've, and you've actually been about, that was just recently, too, it was a few weeks back, you've been about the 10th or 12th person that has said, hey, I heard you on the radio, and I'm like, really? When was that? And I'm like, oh yeah, that was K-Fan, so.
So is that something that's gonna continue?
I, I hope so, yes. Billy Hildebrandt and Bob St. Pierre, you know, we, we planned on talking about this in our third quarter, fourth quarter, we host a lot of, we call them fam tours, film and media tours, and Billy Hildebrandt and Bob St. Pierre of Pheasants Forever, we've always been fortunate enough to host them in some sort of capacity throughout the year, and it's just, it's just a relationship. And when you have a good relationship, you have to, you have to work, work at it. And they've been very good to us and we've been in turn very good to them and, and really about all it entails on our, our end is a little bit of staff time and some mileage and that's about it.
And that's free?
It's free advertising.
Yeah, that's good, keep that up.
Thank you.
Early on, Casey, you mentioned 16 million dollars worth of tourism in this area. Are you basing that on the SIC codes for...
That's, those are numbers that we do get from tourism, and Glacial Lakes does kinda back that up. But that's the, that's the dollars that are spent by sportsmen, sportsmen and women. So that's out, that's just outdoor dollars. But 16 million dollars spent in our region, and I would say our region is probably a five, six county region.
How do they measure that?
I wish I knew how to break that down a little bit farther, but they, you know, when, when upwards of like two, I believe it's like 200 million dollars is spent in the state as a whole, we capture 16 million of that right here in, in our region, so. You can look at that as, you know, depending on the higher, lower year, it's one-tenth, but that one-tenth adds up in a hurry. So when we are at sports shows talking Storybook Land and hunting and fishing, you know, we kinda look at Aberdeen and our region as God's country, you have to get through us to go to anywhere else you'd ever wanna be. And hunting and fishing wise, we're sitting right on top of it, so. We're, we're happy to see those numbers, obviously you'd always, always like to see them higher, but that's a lot of money spent in the area, so.
Anyone else, any questions? Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Both again.
Thank you.
All four of you.
Yes, as well, thank you. And Laura couldn't be here, she had some kid stuff to attend to, so.
Keep doing this, this is good information for us to have.
Is, if that works for you guys quarterly, that works for us, so.
Please.
If you guys don't mind us coming, and we'll try to keep it shorter.
Great detail, though. Thank you for being thorough.
How are we gonna keep you quiet?
I don't know.
Okay, we have no old business tonight, we do have consent calendar items A through D, need a motion on those?
Move.
Second.
Motion business, second by Rux. I notice Carl is suspiciously absent when we have the 2017 audit here tonight, I hope that... All those in favor of approving those four items, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, under new business, need a motion to approve the special liquor license for the theater's performance this week.
Move.
Second.
Motion Remley and second by Ronay, in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. The next item is the acceptance of donation of digital signs telling people when they're going too fast. This comes from your department there, Jordan?
That's correct, also with Police Department, they received some equipment and this is just a routine motion to accept the gift.
Move, approve them.
Motion Johnson, second by Rux, questions on what we're doing here?
But nobody's gonna tell us who gave it to us?
The citizen wishes to remain anonymous, but they're brand-new speedboards, they're two units, they have some really good features with it, they're, the software can give us some good data and, and ability to kinda analyze what's going on in those streets, so we're really appreciative. Met with the Engineering Department to kinda talk about its utility and use and we're kinda excited to be able to use those if you'll approve those.
We should convince people there's a camera with those. Keep them track of them. Any other questions? All those in favor accepting that donation, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. And item C, Robin, surplus of modular office cubicle system.
These would be the cubicles that we picked up for our move over to the Parks and Rec Building. We picked them up from Coventry back in the day and we've been sitting on them for longer than we should have. It's time to move them down the road, put them to some useful purpose someplace else, we certainly don't need to store them.
Move.
Second. Motion Ronay, second by Remley, any questions? All in favor of surplusing them, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item D is bills presented for payment tonight to credit cards to US Bank 38667, MetLife Premium 555, J&amp;K Mowing Abatements 474, AT&amp;T July Cell Phone and iPad Charge $1,001. Copier fees to Marco for the Fire Department 63. Ambulance stuff, payment to Physio Control Inc. 3439, UPS Charge is 69, Northwest Energy Utility 77490. Cylinders for the Water Department $320 to Prax Air Distributing. And lime sludge removal at the Water Plant to Morrison 7399. Lab sample fees for Water Treatment Plant $103 to Water and Environmental Engineering and miscellaneous fees for the Water Department to the South Dakota Lab 1520.
Moved.
Second. Motion Business, second by Remley, questions on any bill? Jordan?
Councilmember Bunsonis, Johnson.
Aye.
Ronay.
Aye.
Ronay.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
All right, motion carries. Item E is payroll from July 22 to August 4, and City Shores Social Security, Old Age and Survivors Insurance Retirement Health and Life.
Moved.
Second. Motion Johnson, second by Slate Hanson, Jordan?
Councilmember Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronay.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
All right, motion carries. Lynn?
I have one quick item, please note that I have scheduled a budget work session for next Monday, starting at 5:00 PM. That's all I have at this time.
Anything else from anybody before we break for executive?
Couple things. Noticing in a report that Third Avenue Bridge is being held up because of the utility company, is that changed?
We got some information today that they will be executing, they've got, they've gotta get some right-of-way to move out of the, off the bridge and out of our right-of-way, so they're gonna have to get a private easement to be able to make the move properly. And it sounds like, once they get that, that done, they're going to be doing their work this fall. So we're looking at probably, I'm assuming, spring construction, but.
So we weren't aware of this, this issue, they weren't aware of this problem before?
Yes, they were aware of it, it's just taken them some time to figure out how to make it work. Apparently, there's a lot of communication lines going through this system. They thought they had a plan to be able to move it off to the side, the contractor was not comfortable with the liability he may incur. And so they, they were in communication with us last fall and early winter, but at that point, we didn't have a bidder yet for the project, so that, that's where things started falling apart.
So another, another item, I see the cable TV franchise agreement has been finalized?
That's right, yes. Finally, both of those were accepted and those are completed.
And then there was a note that we're seeing an uptick in patron complaints?
And that's, and I think I'll attribute that mostly to just the season, the heat. What we see those emanating primarily out of is at the Aquatic Center, with a lot of hot bodies and young people. We, we did have a, an uptick in the number of misbehavior.
Okay.
And so some of those have, have involved in the utilization of our patron conduct, actually older adult people who, who were trespassed as a result of some of their behaviors. So we've, we've excluded them, but other than that, that was the uptick that I was referring to.
Thank you.
You all remember some months ago, maybe, maybe it was over a year ago, the mayor and I were, were both contacted by some residents who lived north of Holgate, who were very interested in having a sidewalk to help their, particularly to help their kids get to Holgate. Mayor and I got a, a nice email last week from the same resident who contacted us initially, and she is thrilled at the responsiveness of, of this city, because the sidewalk is now underway. And, you know, I would join in the congratulations to the, to the city of getting that done. You know, this is what, what we're here for as a, as a city government, and I'm proud of, of the work that the city has done in this regard. Thank you.
Anything else from anyone? Not to entertain a motion, Clem?
No, Chief had raised his hand.
Thank you, I just wanted to mention a couple of things that we're, we have going on tomorrow. From 11:30 to 1:00, we have a fundraising cookout with Safe Harbor, a free will offering at the Police Department in the Community Room, we do that every year. And then tomorrow night, between 6:00 and 9:00 PM, National Night Out occurs at Melgarde Park, so come out and, and see us. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Move to go into executive session to discuss contractual matters.
Second.
Motion Ronay, second by Bunsonis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.